All right, well it looks like it's six o'clock and time to start our November version of the Beaver Creek Planning Commission. So we'll go ahead and open. And I guess the first thing we need to do is do the roll call. I guess we're gonna need to make a motion to excuse Mrs. Akers and Mr. Self.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to excuse Ms. Akers and Mr. Self.
Second.
Can we do that by a general consensus?
Aye.
Next item is approval of today's agenda. Were there any additions or anything else to add to the agenda that wasn't, didn't make it into the packet? No. Perfect. All right, with that, I'll open up to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move...
Do you need to table one of these? You can do it when we get there.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda on dated 7 November for today.
Second.
And we'll do that also by a general voice vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Aye.
All right, and the last item before we get to public hearings is approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes from last month? No, no changes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the September 5th, I'm sorry, the October 3rd minutes.
I second.
And we'll do that again by a general voice vote?
Aye.
All right, so we have three items up for public hearing today. The first item, PUD 18-3 SSP number one, the applicant has requested the case to be tabled until December meeting, so we'll need a motion to table.
Mr. Chair, I motion to table 18-3 SSP number one until the December meeting.
Second.
I guess we'll do the, do the roll here.
Mr. Height?
Aye.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. And with that, we're gonna go ahead and table 18-3 SSP number one. Our next case that we have is PUD 18-4, the Harbor Drive rezoning. Staff, go ahead and read the case for us, please.
This is case number PUD 18-4 on an application filed by Yolo Development LLC, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval to rezone approximately 4.6 acres from CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development to a CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development. The property is located on the east corner of Harbor Drive and Indian Ripple Road, further described as Book Three, Page 19, Parcels 95, 97, 98, and 105 on the Greene County Property Tax Atlas.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And with that, is the applicant available? Read your case, would you like to come up and tell us about the application?
Sure.
If we have a visual we can put up, just site plan maybe, Jeff? Perfect, yeah. And maybe we'll just go for the aerial for now, if you don't mind, talk a little bit about the area, thank you. So, yes, we're looking at a parcel along Harbor Drive there, fronting Indian Ripple, kind of a long piece as you see there in yellow. We've been looking in this area for quite some time, actually. We developed years ago the building that Brian stalls in, as well as Nova Vision there, right at 675 in Indian Ripple. Do a lot in the Beaver Creek area, obviously, especially around the mall, but, you know, great, great demographics, liking a lot of Beaver Creek in this area. We've had a lot of interest in the parcel right on Indian Ripple, and over time, we've kinda struggled with what to do with the remainder of the site, the original developer we've had a great relationship with. One of the products we identified when we studied was a self-storage component that, you know, there's a hole in this area and it's amenity that, when done properly, is a great amenity for the citizens, it's how you do it, how you build it, and the aesthetics of it, which we felt with the use we're looking to put along the Indian Ripple frontage would be a great product to have on this site. If you're familiar with what we do with Beaver Creek, we are on the higher end of everything, and both the retail and office component we do along Indian Ripple and Harbor Drive with the self-storage piece would have that same great aesthetics. Matter of fact, we worked with the current owner to, in the declaration for the area, include that requirement, because we certainly understand from the city's standpoint how important that would be, that the materials and the design we have in the building along Indian Ripple would carry through to the remainder of the site. Maybe now, if you don't mind, that site plan, Jeff. So what we're looking at is about a 10,000 square foot, single-story building along Indian Ripple there. We've got a user that we've been working with for about a year now to take about half of the building right away, and then the rest of that would be office, kinda service, retail use for that area. The remainder of the buildings there, you know, that's a rough layout, we're just at the rezoning stage, but we do try to be forthright with what we're looking to propose here and wanted to show, kind of a quick and dirty, exact unit mix, those types of things, we don't know yet. Don't know about climate control, some of that'll be market-driven, as far as what will go there. But we did do a study of the overall area of what would needed. You know, there's a lot of senior living product and multifamily out there, but what the amenity that was lacking in this area was that component. Aside from that, you know, we certainly are here to answer any other questions you might have after Mr. McGrath's presentation, or anything you have right now.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We have a report from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. As you, as was explained by the applicant tonight, we're considering a rezoning of the property at the corner of Indian Ripple Road and Harbor Drive. The property is currently zoned CPUD 96-4. Obviously, the year of the PUD gives you an idea when that was approved, it was almost 20 years ago, as to how that PUD was created. Since then, this land has kinda been repurposed, I think there used to be veterinary clinic on this property, which has since been demolished, and the remainder of the property's been vacant, really, since the PUD was initially established. So what we're looking to do this evening is to rezone that property to another CPUD, which would be CPUD 18-4. The uses that are permitted are similar to the uses permitted in the remainder of the PUD 96-4 with the inclusion of the self-storage and lock facilities. When we looked at that, we wanted to be as consistent as possible with the existing zoning that's out there, but also we're sensitive to the lack of that kind of product in the southern part of town, which really, we don't see much of in this area of Beaver Creek, which is, it's hard to find an appropriate location for something like that outside of the resident, neighboring residential properties, so we worked with Mr. Barnett and Synergy Development as to, well, where would appropriate location be? And this was identified as one, as maybe with the product that we anticipate they'd design, there, if anybody was gonna do it, we felt a level of comfort that this would probably be, somebody would do it right, and the non-proximity to the existing residential neighborhoods was something we considered when we looked at this property. Obviously, you can see more of our intense zoning areas are here, next, just adjacent to it. B4 is the most intense zoning before you get into industrial zoning districts, so those are the highway zoning districts, so there's a lot of permitted uses that would be allowed in those areas. So the O1 and the B2 permitted uses in here do serve as kind of a consistency as you move down this corridor on Indian Ripple Road. We've got the land use plan, again, this is in a Ripple corridor area, so we're rezoning, so we'll go through a specific site plan approval, that if it were already appropriately zoned, it would still come before you for a specific site plan or ASRA approval, but this is the first phase, I wanna remind everybody, this is kind of the general look at what the uses will be permitted for this property, and we're not getting into the aesthetics, the landscaping, the access, the architectural elevations just yet, this is the first step in a two-stage process. The rezoning to a PUD would be followed up by a specific site plan, where we would get the conditions of the elevations, the landscaping, the lighting, the security, and the signage and all that kinda stuff would come in a second phase, assuming this phase would go forward. With that, the recommendation is for approval, the attached resolution includes four conditions. The conditions mean the adoption of a general, a general concept plan for the CPUD being the plan you see before you on the screen, permitted uses being B2 and O1 with the addition of the self-storage and lock facilities. And we also did, just to protect the interest moving forward and get this into ordinance and into law for this property, that the buildings along the perimeter of development of budding harbor and Indian Ripple shall incorporate four-sided architectural, architecture, and shall not have any parent rear. So we have also talked about dumpster enclosures being three-sided, and that the buildings in the dumpster enclosure shall be designed as required by the planning department, planning commission, and city council at the specific site plan stage. So we anticipate a higher-end product up along Harbor, and then especially around the periphery of the project, along with security, decorative fencing, and some landscaping and all that, to make sure we're protecting the adjacent properties. The access points and type of access will be approved at the specific site plan phase with the review and approval by our engineer and the planning staff, along with planning commission and city council. But there are four conditions for you considering this resolution, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. All right, with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. If anybody has any comments, questions, now would be the time to come up and say your piece. And if you could, please state your name and your address for the record.
Home address, or?
Yep.
Steve Nuttall, it's 2455 Wildwood Lane, Sugar Creek Township, 45385. I own the building right across the street from the first newer complex, on the complex going down Harbor, the first new building on the left, so it'd be right directly across from the last buildings of the, right there, that's my building. So in it, I have two groups of attorneys that lease from me, actually, one of them, I think, was handling this for the Bechtel family, this development. I'm just concerned about, I know the Mills Development does everything nice-looking, good stuff, but what's gonna do to the property values there? We're talking medical, office space, zoned, 20 years ago, when I bought the property, was protected by, you know, the covenances and the zoning to, you know, protect the values of our property. I just think that's a downgrade to put storage units in there. The building out on Indian Ripple Road looks fine, that's what it was zoned for, campus style. I just, I'm just disagreeing with putting storage units up there, as well as I know the other tenants down, or other owners down the street at Menon University express the same thing. Mine Valley Hospital owns the building next to me, they have no interest in opposing, I don't believe, so, that's my feelings on it. Where are we at on protecting my investment, long-term, with storage units across the street? Does the mix fit? I don't, I'm opposing it, so that's where I'm at with it. That's kinda all I have to say, but, you know, I have 19 pages of covenances and things that I bought this property for, to protect me, so we're violating several, not violating, I think we're changing the aspect of what the development was supposed to be like to put storage units in there. My two cents worth, I don't know, where do we go from there?
Okay.
That's all I have to say about it. Where do we go from the next session of this?
This is simply just a rezoning?
Okay.
This doesn't determine any architecture, any layout, any specific site plan, this is, this is simply a straight rezoning.
So the rezoning, where I understand, when I talked to Melissa, also could include retail, is that correct?
Double check with staff, but yeah, I believe that that use allows for retail as well.
We'll answer whatever questions he has when he's done with it.
I'm sorry.
When he has, whatever questions you wanna ask him now, we'll get it addressed.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, is retail like what we're looking across the street, where, you know, jets, pizzas, and all that, could that be put in down there? I mean, that's, that's retail, correct? Okay, so that's, that's a possibility, we could have retail across from campus-style, nice buildings that, I don't...
Okay, absolutely, when we're asking our questions, we'll definitely address those issues for you, for sure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with any comments, questions? All right, if that's it, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will start here to my left with Mr. Height, with any questions he has.
Staff, if you have a few moments?
Yes, sir.
So let's talk about that, converting from B4 to B2O1, and, you know, what, what changes are gonna be made to the available businesses that can go in there?
Well, currently in the PUD 96-4, the permitted uses are the O1 and the, let's see where the, and I believe there are B2 uses available as well.
Is that in the packet somewhere?
Yeah, he's right. Looking at the original ordinance here, there are some outlines of some, some retail businesses within this development. The zoning is not much different than what's out there currently today. If you look at the property, it says includes many O1 uses and many B2 uses that are currently allowed in PUD 96-4. Now, how that developed, yeah, you've got, you've got a Posfer Construction down here, which is a construction company, not really permitted in an O1 district, but the B2 allowed it there. You've got the, as was stated, some professional office here, and you've got the Menon University down here. But up along front, I believe the intention is more office-type uses, it's not designed to be a McDonald's or a fast-food restaurant. It looks more consistent with a lot of the buildings that are up and down Indian Ripple Road, so the uses that were permitted within this PUD are really targeted to that front building, which, again, would be common to a lot of the uses you see up and down Indian Ripple, which I think that's a high-demand area. As you can see back here, this has never been developed before, so there are some challenges with that, and, again, the use that's been proposed this evening was something we looked pretty, pretty hard and closely at, in terms of proximity to residential, and what the prop, what the highest, best use for that property could be, and then also, who's developing the property, and what would, what would it look like in the end? But a lot of the concerns, I think, into how they will look, we will get into that the next phase, should you guys recommend that they move forward with the uses as presented.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Height?
All right, I have a couple here. So, as you stated, currently it's B2 or O1, so if it doesn't get rezoned tonight, and it stays as-is, on any of these uses in B2 or O1 that are not conditional, would we have the, would we approve a site-specific plan for any of those types of businesses that would come in, or would they just come in and do what they needed to do?
No, you would approve a specific site plan for any one of those, so, I mean, but right now, if you came in, let's say, let's say there was a site plan approval here, without really looking into the previous approval, if it was a retail building, you wouldn't consider the use, you would just consider the site, the site plan, if it was a permitted B2 use within the PUD.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schreider. I guess I'll just go ahead and keep you up here. Any concerns, 'cause I'm aware of quite a few storage units that are right next to the professional offices in this area specifically, but any worry or concern about potential drop in, in property values, things like that?
You know, I haven't seen that, I can't say, with, from a real estate analysis point of view as to what has happened, I, I mean, I think with the quality that's been done, I haven't heard or have any hard evidence that that would have a negative impact on any adjoining property. You know, obviously, the property values here will go up, I don't, I can't speak necessarily how they'll affect the other properties. I don't see that, I'm not aware of that ever being an issue, we do see store and lock facilities next to professional office and locations throughout the city, some of the ones with lower standards in the township look a little less than what we would approve here in Beaver Creek, but this one, we're very cognizant, as I know the developer is, of the property values around here, what's to be expected for this type of development, given the surrounding properties and their owners.
Okay, and again, that'll come at the specific site plan, in the next, following months, and all the details and everything, I know this group will probably be
Sure.
pretty picky about how we allow things to be shaped and exposed and...
Right. I mean, there's always a negative connotation with, with self-storage locks, 'cause most of the times, their appearance, and I think, working with these guys, they have an understanding in our preliminary discussions that this won't be your typical self-store and lock facility, given that it's in Beaver Creek, given that it's in some proximity to some other businesses in this location, but we've seen it in other communities where it does work, if it's done right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, those are all the questions I have, anybody else have any follow-up questions?
So I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, if it stays the way that it is, and a B2 use comes in for any of those four properties, as long as they fit within the B2 use, we're not, we wouldn't be in the position of approving what that use is, just the site-specific of what the building would look like.
Correct.
For instance, if a drugstore, a convenience store, and a billiard room decided to build in that area, we wouldn't have any control over that, it would just be the aesthetics of the building and the site-specific plan of those uses.
Well, what you have in the existing ordinance is a, is a permitted O1 uses with some additional uses, like a veterinary clinic, and, 'cause that was there in a prototype research and engineering facility, but there is crossover between the O1 and the B2 uses, so some of the uses that are permitted in the existing ordinance that are O1 are also permitted at a B2. So there is crossover, but if it was O1, absolutely, if it's selected B2 uses that are outlined in the existing ordinance, then yes, you would just be looking at the specific site plan approval.
Okay, thank you.
There is a list in the existing ordinance, so, for example, you have health studios, you have lawn and mower sales, 'cause it says lots, the lots, conceptual lots 1 through 4 are also permitted the following uses, which are mostly B2-type uses, so any of those you see on page two and page three of the existing ordinances, those are mostly all B2 uses, they could come in on this property, and we couldn't question the use, only the site plan development.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Height, any follow-up?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, I will need a motion, one way or the other.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 18-4 with the four attached conditions.
Second.
With that, we'll go ahead and do the roll.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. And with that, the motion passes 3-0, and we're on to our last case of the night, that is case PC 18-12 CU, and if you could read the report.
This is case number PC 18-12, conditional use, on an application filed by Avis Budget Car Rental LLC, PO Box 612717, DFW Airport, Texas 75261. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for a car rental service to be located at 2324 Grange Hall Road. The property is further described as Book One, Page 13, Parcel 126 on the Greene County Property Tax Atlas.
Perfect, thank you very much, and somebody here representing the applicant?
My name is Chris Dale, my address is 4065 Rundell in Dayton, Ohio. I'm the territory manager for the Avis and Budget Car Rental. We're currently requesting this conditional use permit. We're currently located inside the Sears at the Fairfield Common Mall, and that, we were notified that that location is closing, therefore necessitates us relocating to another location. We have had a thriving business in that location, and we'd like to stay in the Beaver Creek area, therefore, we needed to find a suitable location with, with the parking that will suffice to our needs, and we found that at this Grange Hall location, and we would have an average of about 10 cars at that location, so nothing that would impact, the parking is ample at that location. Anything above that, we would remove it from that location, because we share a fleet throughout the whole city, so there would not be any major impact to the parking of that location for any significant timeframe. It is staffed by independent operators, with a staffing of an average of about two people, so it is sufficient to maintain the business. We currently average about nine rentals per day out of that location, and again, our goal is to keep the parking to a minimum, because obviously, we make our money when they're on the road and not sitting in our parking lot. So for that reason, we are requesting the conditional use permit for that location.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we have a report from Mr. McGrath?
Yes, thank you. For you, you may be familiar with those, this location, for those who are you or not, this is the corner of Grange Hall and Kemp Road, this is the Jim Quest, there's a drive-thru, Jamie's Auto, the old AAA, as well as some King's Table, and some other uses within this area of Beaver Creek. As was stated by the applicant, tonight they're here considering a new location, given the repurposing of the Sears building that we, you'll see here shortly on your agenda for the upper and lower floors of, of the Sears building. They're currently located in that facility at the mall at Fairfield Commons. They do do great business, and we do wanna keep them in this area, 'cause they do do well, and it's, obviously, it provides a need for some of our residents, and we, we concur that this location is a great location for them, given they're gonna be located here in the old Bartender School. You see a lot of area here that's designated, I think, for parking. We require in the conditions of the conditional use approval, only 15 spots be designated as Avis parking, parking spots, so, if they have rental cars, you know, sometimes on the weekends, this, this gets busy, King's Table will get busy, and the parking does tend to go this way, not so much this, this way, it does come more from the front door back, so, we're not concerned with the availability of the parking spots for them, and as, as was stated, they have that, there's a lot of parking spots designated here, but only 15 or, would be required to be designated for strictly just for the Avis rental vehicles themselves, the other ones may be by lease, but this is a, an area we feel is ample storage for the, for the business. With that, we are recommending approval of this conditional use application, this is a decision by planning commission, it won't go forward to city council, it is a public hearing, we want you to vote this evening. The conditional use permit and the certificate of use compliance permit would be issued by our department, and they would be available to get that processed and moving. So some of the conditions are that they get a certificate of use compliance permit, and that all the concerns of the planning, zoning department, city engineer, and fire department be addressed, any signage requirements would be the B2 zoning requirements, which is consistent with the rest of this facility, and that the 15 parking spots be marked and designated specifically for the rental fleet, and those vehicles may only be parked in those spaces. But if, with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them after the public hearing, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will open up the public hearing for PC 18-12 CU. Anybody have any comments, questions, step right up. All right, well, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will open it up, questions to my fellow commissioners. Mr. Schreider?
So I have one question for the applicant to start off with. So, do you all wash the cars when they come in on, or at the location that the cars come back to, as in this parking lot?
Most of our locations, yes.
So where, what is the plan for washing the cars here?
At this location, we're planning on just doing the interiors, just the vacuuming, you know, windows, things like that, things along those lines.
So there won't be any exterior washing?
No.
And I, I just asked, because it's all unfinished gravel around the back of the building?
Yeah.
Make it rather difficult.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple questions for staff.
Yes, sir.
So, the parking spots that are annotated on here, within our packet, it says possible designated parking area?
Mm-hmm.
So that's not set in stone, that that, those spots will be the ones designated for this?
We, we, those are the areas that will be set in stone, but we're only requiring 15 of them be marked
Right.
for the, the parking area. The rest of it, Mr. Miller's here, I don't know the details of what their agreement is with the property owner, as to how many spaces they'll, they'll get involved with, but we, or what Avis is requiring, what we're requiring, based on their letter of intent, is that they allocate 15 solely for the purpose of the parking of the fleet.
Okay, so that was my second question of who's, who is in charge of determining where those spots are, so I guess it's the owner of the property and the applicant?
Yeah, I'm sure there'd be some enforcement of the lease agreement there.
All right, and then, what about the business to the south that has only front parking spots in front of the retail space? Is there any concerns with those?
That's the owner's business, so...
Oh, okay.
I don't think they have too much of a concern.
All right, last question.
That's where their HR, our commercial reality office is located.
Okay. So is the intent to mark these spots with signs, above-ground signs, not just pavement markings?
Yeah, I would, that is our intent, to have them signed, from not on a pavement marking, but more of a visible driver's line-of-sight notification, unless I'm mistaking, I mean, that's what we're anticipating, is when they're being designated. It could be one sign, it could be however, but we, we do want some kind of physical signage there.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Perfect, so we'll toss it over to Mr. Height then?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. I have a couple questions for the applicant. Okay. Which unit are we actually talking about that, that Avis is gonna be?
The N unit on the top building, yep, right there.
Okay.
Facing, facing Grange Hall, or closest to Grange Hall.
Okay. So, Mr. Schreider mentioned you guys are gonna do interior... So, Mr. Schreider had mentioned you guys are gonna do interior details, is that gonna be done out back, though? I mean, you're not gonna be plugging vacuums and run them in the middle of a.
That would, yeah, preferably out back, yeah.
It'll be out back, okay, alright, perfect. The last question I had, what about car sales? Because I know a lot of car rental companies also sell the cars that they, that they rent out or they lease out, is there a intention to do any sort of car sales onsite?
No, that's not part of our operations as far as rental locations go, if that's, car sales, something separate entity.
Perfect. With that, I don't have any further questions, it's pretty easy.
Thank you.
Second helping for anybody? I guess with that, I will, motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PC 18-12 CU with the attached four conditions.
I second that motion.
That, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. It looks like we're all out of items for the night, pretty easy. Appreciate you guys taking me, easy on me today. With that, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
We'll go ahead. Meeting adjourned.